Next is from Brad A. Sanders of 419 Walling Mill Avenue. My name is Brad Sanders and I am a lifelong resident of the borough. I would like to express my interest in filling the vacant council seat for the two-year term. I have been a member of the Citizens Fire Company number one for about ten years now, serving in various capacities. I thank you in advance for considering me for this seat and hope to have the opportunity to serve alongside all of you and continue to make Tamaco a great place to live, work, and grow. Next is from Carrie Lasky. For the past year and a half, it has been my pleasure to fill the seat of the late Councilman John Trudage. My time appointed will expire at the end of 2015. Please accept this letter of interest to continue serving on Tamaco Borough Council. I am devoted to working with the various committees I was assigned, excuse me, and look forward to whatever endeavors the future holds for our community. Thank you again for this privilege to serve and your consideration for the future.
Can we ask, I was just gonna ask Mike on a point of order whether or not we can fill a vacancy until the vacancy actually exists in January.
It has to exist in January.
So I don't think we could, I don't think we could fill the vacancy. It doesn't exist yet, so we can't fill it until the first meeting. Now, it would be helpful if we knew what council was gonna do, just from a logistical perspective, that that person come and get sworn in on the same day. Don't have to do that if they're sworn in on a different, the following day. But if we, if we know which way we're gonna go, it'd be helpful, you know, we can take action just to let, let them know. But we can't fill it until it's a vacancy, is that right?
Thank you.
That'll be one of your first votes, Ron, is to fill vacancies.
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Borough managers report.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have too much to report. Just that our street sweeper is still running. When we decide to stop running, then we will notify everyone in the, by press release and also the, the system that we have. We've been putting up Christmas decorations, as you see, ready for the holidays. Also, I'll be working on the bid package for our annual supply of street materials. I don't think that'll be ready for the next meeting, probably the first meeting in January, we'll have the results of that. And we did get, we got this today, a copy of the law batch report. Just got it today, so I didn't have a chance to go through it myself, but we got copies out for everyone. So if you please take a look and if you have any questions, you know, let us know. If I don't know the answer, I'll, we'll get an answer.
Who, it's good to report, Kevin, there's some estimations on cost. Who put those together?
The engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
One, one thing I'd like to see in here is, is a summary at the end of the recommended improvements. If you look at it now, you have to look at, they're not all on one page, it's hard to compare. It'd be nice to have a, a single sheet that you can, that you can look on the map, look to the, the location, and then compare it with the, with the cost.
The only question I have, Mike and Kevin, is that, just briefly looking at it, they seem to indicate the presence of, of, or the, I don't know if it's the remnants of the Wildcats and Wildcats. Are these new, or are these things that we've taken care of and just haven't been capped off on that side, or, or what is that? Do we know that?
That, that's one question I have for the engineer. We'll have to compare, I'm not sure if he did that, we'll have to compare this to what we found previously with previous inspections and see if, if they are in fact new, or just remnants of ones that have.
Because I would imagine if they, we find that they're new, I, we need to move quickly with them.
It'd be pretty hard to imagine some of these could be missed.
Right, that's why I said, I was just kinda thinking maybe some of them are just remnants of.
Or if it's solely roof drains, that's okay, they can stay. And that was my other question too, are, are these actual sewer connections, or could they be?
As opposed to storm sewer?
Yeah.
Could they be? Storm water, is that what you mean?
Yeah, like, like, a lot of buildings downtown have internal roof drains. And if, if the discharge is solely roof drainage, that's fine.
But that's fine just because it's not going into sewer system? So not to confuse the issue that if someone's got a roof drain that goes right into the sewer system, that is not permitted.
Right, it should go in.
To the, to the storm sewer.
The street.
We have two, we have two sewer systems, the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer. Only rainwater goes into the storm sewer.
Right, so it's groundwater, roof drain, stuff like that, you know, clear water, that's okay. So that, that's, there'll be several discussions with the engineer.
Well, we wanna make sure we're not re, we wanna make sure we're not rechecking the same.
Right.
A lot of, everybody has now hooked up to the sources, the sewer system. So we wanna make sure we're not getting, reverifying that.
Kevin, it might be, I certainly appreciate you taking the time to make photocopies of the reports. This is really just an administrative thing, but I don't know if we've lost some detail in the, in the photos by dip black and white. Should we get some down copies for?
Sure, actually, you can see electronically, I was gonna forward it if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine too, I guess, but.
We'll get you a color copy.
Copy of he has his name on it.
The color, yeah, some of the colored photo, there, there is a little lighting damage being done. So some, a lot of, even the color photos just, you know, a little dark.
The point was certainly something was lost in the photocopy process, no matter how dark I did, so.
Oh, yeah.
Police chief, mayor's police chief, have any reports? Committee reports, do we have any committee reports? No committee reports, mayor's report.
Just wanna touch on something, I mean, everybody knows my neighbor had a little excitement about his past weekend. We lost a couple of homes. I'm sure some of the fire guys are talking about it already. There was some parking issues, I think, that may have been a struggle. It's certainly no new information for anybody. Two trucks came down South Street. They had to come in from the top and another struggle to get down to the bottom at the end. I know there's no parking, Moon Street, still a couple of cars that, that parked there occasionally, get tickets, whatnot. But there's park, people parked along all three sections of that. I think it's something that parking traffic should take a look, whether it's this session or the next session. I mean, I'm selfish, I guess, or maybe it's just wrong with it. I spend a lot more time in my own neighborhood, but I'm sure there's some other neighborhoods that have some tight streets that we may be needing to take a look at, they have fire trucks now. We all know the trucks are no longer six feet wide, but the days of the Honda long gone. You know, working with a truck that's a hundred inches trying to get them down, I don't know if it makes sense what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think the other thing though is, and I don't think that it needs to be anything, because it's already an enforceable thing. If you start looking at the corners throughout the entire town, the corners are horrible throughout the entire town to try to get anything around. I understand parking's tough and I've always, you know, said that we don't need to put a no parking the corner sign up, because that's the law. You, you, if we just enforce those things, and I'm not saying we're, we're lackadaisical in enforcement, but I think we need to take a more serious look at the, the walking to the corners and start cracking down throughout the whole town.
Sure, I certainly agree, and I think what's, what's happened over the past, I think, and I could be wrong, I can't speak prior to when I came here, but I think some of the council members and the leaders of our committee has been sympathetic to the parking issues and have, you know, kind of, you know, looked that direction. I think if, if our, you know, we're standing together that we want to create this type of enforcement, I'd be glad to, to do that.
And nobody's, nobody's saying to get a tape measure out and say, oh, are they sixteen feet from the corner? I mean, you can tell there's a difference between being four inches from the corner and, and eight feet. I'm not saying get the tape measure out, measure it, but what's blatant is blatant, we should just start dealing with it.
There was some, talk about some part-time issues recently. We did some review, at, at this point, all the information that we're, we're seeing, and I think we looked at a couple of different things, are all being relevant to thirty-hour line. I think is everybody in agreeance on, on the extent of part-time would be, would be stuck at thirty hours?
That's what I, that's the information I've been given so far. They are checking, continuing to check in the, in the, but, and speaking with our human resources consultant and also insurance broker, they're saying to, to the best of their knowledge, once you get thirty hours, then you're no longer considered part-time, at least on the ACA.
Sure, I certainly appreciate, you know, we struggle sometimes to fulfill hours and we've seen some different areas that may have set differently than the thirty-hour limit, but we certainly want to, you know, stay consistent as we have in the past and follow the same direction, so that's, until we hear differently, we certainly stick with maintaining thirty below, below thirty.
Is it thirty and below, or?
Below thirty, I call it.
Below.
Thirty and above would be the, the change at any point. The other item, I spoke a couple of weeks ago about the pension. Now that George is here, she's been certainly, speaking a little bit clearer. But nevertheless, we talked about it just a couple of minutes ago. At this point, the chief is already in the drop program for the pension, and he will show his effectiveness next year, correct? Cause he starts, right, exactly. Henry Woods, the corporal, has entered the drop program, but we won't see that for next year, it'll be the following year.
But we'll still certify him for state aid for next year.
Correct, so what it means is we will lose their, their unit value, but they won't be contributing either.
Right, their wages are not considered part of the M M O.
Kind of a wash, there's a little bit of loss that we may see within state aid, but it is, it is minimal. I just wanted to make sure everybody certainly understood what was happening. There was some conversation at the pension meeting and talk of losing some state aid certainly sparked their interest to say, oh, well, we need to get people hired, we need to get people hired. But at the end of the day, yes, we will change in unit value, we may lose some state aid, but there won't be any extra going in as well.
And these are the first officers to use the drop program?
Yes, they are, the chief is, is in full swing. Corporal Woods is, is scheduled to start, I believe, July?
He was, no.
The army started, back to November, my bad.
Can you, can you explain briefly what, what that is, the drop program?
Well, they're, they're, in essence, according to our pension, they're, they're retiring, they're setting their date for retirement. So they're no longer contributing to their pension. Where the other guys are contributing a percentage every month to their pension, these guys are no longer. So they're anticipating their last day, they're no longer contributing. So they're getting a little bit extra in their paycheck every week, cause they're not contributing. And that way, there's no more, that money's not going into the program. It's, it's, it's an early retirement, so to speak, where they're still working, but they're no longer contributing to the pension program.
But doesn't, doesn't that money accumulate for them, that on the day that they retire, they get a lump sum?
No, they don't get a pension payment.
They will start their pension when they retire, they'll get a lump sum, because they're not, they're no longer paying into it.
Right.
So they're, every week they're collecting, instead of, what, five percent?
Okay.
Eight percent.
Eight percent, right, eight percent, so the other guys are contributing eight percent.
Okay, so they could be saving the eight percent when they retire and have a bonus, where they could be spending it.
Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you, mayor. Anybody from the floor wish to address council about any issues? Please stand up and state your name. Go ahead, Mr. Kirby.
Robert Kirby, 118 Clay Street, Tamaco. Couple months ago, I complained about a neighbor dumping concrete from a concrete wall in the West Street between Clay and Union Street. I don't see any progress has been done there yet, is there any reason why? Does anybody know?
I know our code officer has attempted to contact him and has sent him notices of violation, but with no response. That looks like, I'll have to ask the code officer for an update on that.
Can't the borough do it and build a guy?
It, I think it may get to a point soon where we have to do that.
You don't wanna wait too long, it's getting cold out, you never know.
I'm okay with that.
But it's not, nothing hasn't been done, and that's not like, you just don't take a wall down and dump it along the street, that's crazy. So that's all right enough, I'll keep in touch, thank you.
Sure.
It is a light way.
It might be, it might be something criminal too, do you mean when the chief take a look at that? I mean, it's just like, you know, littering, or, you're not allowed to dump debris into the middle of the street.
I mean, the big thing is get it cleaned up, so why can't we get it cleaned up?
Well, I need to talk with Mike, make sure that we've done what we need to do before we go ahead and do that and then build it.
Is that's what you need to do, Mike, is that something that you need time to investigate?
I'm gonna go with Kevin.
Okay, that's hard to help.
Well, we need, we need two weeks.
You may need copies of what was sent out, so we'll round that out for.
But you're right, it's in the railways, get it out of the way. Star Street.
Yeah.
Chief.
Ever problem, a handicap, plate was just put up on my street. And what happened a couple of years ago, there used to be one there, and it was taken down, okay, because the lady passed away. And then my neighbor applied for another one. And what happened was, instead of putting it where the original one was, they put it seven feet up, in which that whole parking spot, handicap parking spot is about twenty-six, twenty-seven feet long. And I, I can't see the purpose of it, because we lost one parking spot already now. Not saying that the lady don't deserve the handicap spot, she does deserve it, but it's the placement of a sign.
So you asked, same side of the street, just move it one way or the other?
It ought to be down where the old one used to be, because we're saving seven more feet then. And it's way we could get another vehicle in. You get twenty-seven feet for a handicap, that's unheard of, they're normally like twenty feet.
Maybe the parking traffic committee could take a look at that.
And, and I don't know who goes, does anybody go check around where the sign placement should be? Who does?
And we determine the location, usually Rob does that, Rob and the street.
So how does he come up with twenty-seven feet?
In that case, I don't know. What's the address?
Her address is two twenty-one, mine is two twenty-three.
Two twenty-one.
Yeah, in fact, the, the sign's right, right by my house, and it's about, from the curb coming in, it's about that far in. And then my drain pipe comes out, and you only have that much walkway, which on, I would think a wheelchair could get through. All I'm asking is to take the sign and put it down where the other one used to be.
Will we take into consideration what the property owner requests on the fourth? You know, they'll request where the sign, where they want the sign to be placed.
So you could actually get a twenty-seven foot parking spot?
Well, I'm not saying that.
Because you have, Kevin, you have, you have a drive, a garage right here.
We don't, we don't line the spot, we don't, we don't line the spot, all we do is put the sign in.
You have a garage here.
We didn't designate a twenty-seven foot, foot parking spot.
Okay, you have a garage here, okay? Now, we're going up, there's a row home here, a row home here, a mine home here. Each of our lots are thirteen by a hundred and ten, okay? So now you're talking twenty, twenty-six feet for two houses, and then plus an additional foot or two on mine.
I think we understand what you're saying, we'll, we'll have.
I can't, I can't see the purpose of where the sign was put.
Again, I don't know.
People should be in front of the property owner that's requesting the size.
It should be closest to that corner, to that corner spot, of where it used to be.
We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. And just one other thing, I'd like to thank council for the donation to the fire department for the radios.
You turn that camera around and get that off.
I know you don't get too many thank yous, but since I came out to complain, I figured I'd thank you.
It's important, it's, it's an important investment that we're making on this.
Yes, it is.
And it's nothing compared to what you guys donate every day when they come to this.
Anyhow, thank you.
Ron.
Ron Bone, two twenty-nine Spruce Street, Tamaco. I just wanna emphasize on, sort of on the donation that the borough gave us, which all helps the fire companies. But also, for the general public and borough council, just to take note to the fire that Mr. Morris was talking about, how blessed we are in this town to have volunteer service and equipment to handle that the way they did. It was tragic, it was a lot of damage, but just drive by or walk by and look at what could have been if we wouldn't have the services we have today, we are blessed. I just want that to be noted.
Anybody else from the floor? Deb.
Deb Holtes, I want to thank you for patience, for holding the street, allowing you to drive the hump around down and not dump one hole, hole, thank you.
And I'll spend overtime again, the holes will be formed. And it'll start all over again. But our, our crew does a really nice job, and I know that they take a lot of pride in, in, in patching those holes and patching the sheets. So it's, they've done a really nice work, so thank you. Anybody else on the floor? Okay, solicitors report, Mike?
I don't have any.
All right. Unfinished business, under unfinished business, we have to budget after we got all these banks and go after budgeting.
Well, I guess I'll say, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the twenty sixteen budget.
We have a motion by Tom, second by Justin, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? I, I do have one comment, one of the, we had a meeting with the, the collective bargaining unit, the United Auto Workers. One of the changes in the, in the budget is a, a pretty steep increase in our health insurance costs. We, the, the negotiating committee did meet with the, with the union and tried to work out some way to, to reduce costs and we, just, a long story short, we didn't get anywhere. So, so that there will be an eight percent increase in our, our health insurance costs in two thousand sixteen. That is reflected in the budget, so, but it's, we were trying, we were hoping to be able to save some money there, reallocated towards other things, but we were not able to do that.
That, that reflects an increase in cost of premiums, correct?
In premiums.
And there also are increased costs to co-pays as well in that plan?
Yes, yeah, so it's premium plus, plus co-pays. Anybody else that have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, the ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the twenty sixteen tax ordinance, setting the real estate tax at eighteen and a quarter mils for general purpose and a mil and a half for the building and equipment fund. This is a no tax increase for.
Motion by Tom, second by Carrie, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? Deb?
You add those two numbers together, you get nineteen point seven five mil?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll have a roll call vote, it's an ordinance.
Kara.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Lasky.
Yes.
Mace.
Yes.
Starksaw.
Yes.
Gersky.
Yes. Okay, any other unfinished business? Any new business?
Mr. President, on a new business, I'd like to make a motion that the borough retain the services of a producer of record agreement with Joe Pillup for ETA benefits for our group healthcare benefits program.
Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Dave, to make ETA benefits in Tamaco as our broker of record for our health insurance. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just a comment, we, we had, I believe we had temporarily for a year, another broker of record that was not from town, but we, we've talked and, and met and gone over some things, and it would be nice that, A, we can give business to someone that's in town, but it's also nice for our employees, if there's an issue, they can go directly to the office and, and have it dealt with, that they don't have to call Georgia, who then has to call our, our person that handles the insurance. They can go direct, we're, we're cutting out the middleman, saving time, making it convenient for the employees, and I think that's what it's all about, keeping it local.
And just to be clear, ETA benefits doesn't provide the health insurance, it's capital blue cross, but they manage our account for us. So it's, it's much better to have someone closer to home district who you can say.
And no matter, the way I understand it, no matter if I get package A that costs X amount of dollars, it doesn't matter who I go to to handle that insurance, it's still package A at that amount of dollars.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Mr. President, I also have a motion to sign a rescinding of the prior producer record designation with Higgins Insurance.
Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Dave, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, the ayes have it. Any other new business? Do we need an executive session?
Do we, I'm gonna ask a question too, talk about some of the finances on the C D, the community development group. Is that something that needs to be done in the executive session, because it is dealing with?
No, we could talk about it.
So just some of the things on the community development department, Kevin, you may be able to answer this. I mean, I understand there, there are loan programs that go out to help fix up, you know, sidewalks and, and those types of things. How are, how are those loans structured? In other words, we have a list here of, of the entire rehabilitation loans that are payable.
Right.
So, obviously, there are different stages of how it's structured, but, but the base structure is all the same for all these?
No, it depends on the number of people on the house sold and their income.
Okay.
That's, and there's a table for all of them.
And are they?
Some of those might be five years old, some could be ten years old.
But they're still, they're still paying on, they're still current payments, those types of things.
Well, I'm not sure they're all current.
Okay, so, so going down, I mean, that'd be something I'd be interested to know, is where we are with the current, all these things. The second question is, I look at some of the properties, not knowing the work that has been done, but as I look at the amount due and the value, what is the value, these loans have certain values, what are, what are they based on? So I could get how much money if my properties were X amount, what, how are we figuring this out?
It's not, there's a limit on what we loan. There's like a minimum and a maximum. And it's based on, the first, well, the first thing we look for is addressing like code violations. That's, that's one of the first things we look at, you know, and then, I don't, I don't believe the value of the house is a big of a factor.
So at any, any point, and here's my question.
I don't think it plays a big role.
So if I, if I have a, a home, and looking, and again, without physically going and seeing this, but just maybe recognizing some of the addresses, and, and I see some of the amounts due on, on this, I'd really have to question if the loan equals what the, what the, what the property's valued at. So I mean, if, if that's a loan that's given out, that there's no property value there, I guess I'd just question how that, that works. I know there's a formula, I know it's all not any up and up, I'm sure.
I have to check.
But it's just the information online.
One, one thing to keep in mind, we, we do have a really good collection rate on these loans. And there are times when it costs more to fix up the house than the house is worth. Unfortunately, the property values in Tamaco are like that, you may have a home that's worth twenty thousand dollars, it doesn't take long to, to, you know, if you put on a roof and do some other work.
But then do we, once that loan's done, the work's done, do we then revalue, reevaluate the property and, and see what the value is?
No.
It's probably still worth the same amount.
No, once the loan's done, it's done, we, we don't determine the value of the house.
It's like saying, I've got a ten thousand, a car that's worth ten thousand dollars, I'm gonna put twenty thousand dollar worth of work into it.
That often happens with a home.
Yes, their home.
They say you never get out what you put into it.
I agree, but the problem is usually that's with private institutions, we're dealing with money that, that's coming from, you know, from, from the rehab loans and from, from government money.
Yeah, federal, yeah.
Yeah.
One thing to keep in mind too, is property values really tanked, you know, a few years back too, so properties probably are worth what they used to be.
So, so can I ask that, this, this information's good, but can I ask that we just, I'm just curious on how they're structured? What's the rules again?
Well, one of the things is, we, we need to consider whether or not we should even continue this program. Our interest rate of four percent is, is hardly even competitive now for a commercial loan. You know, it's, you know, we are putting out nearly as many loans as we, as we have in, in the distant past. I mean, in the recent past, we haven't put out many loans at all.
Not too many.
And like I said, I'd like to know, some of these are actually current up to date.
No, I'm not saying they're all current, because I know they're not.
Well, I'm looking at some, I'm thinking, I don't even know where that place is.
Yeah, we had many, many, many more in the past, I mean, we had, I'm, I'm sure well over a hundred in the past. We've been fortunate lately, a lot of them are coming due, and we've had quite a few payoffs. We've been fortunate lately, a lot of them are coming due, and we've had, uh, quite a few payoffs. Um, I, I couldn't tell you how many, you know, I could find out, but I couldn't tell you how many payoffs we've had, it just seems like we've had a pretty steady, steady stream of payoffs, which is a good thing.
It's a good thing.
You know, that means they pay off their loan, you know, they paid that. But the, the interest rate, again, is on base on a table, uh, it's, it ranges from zero to four, four or five percent. I forget the upper limit, four or five percent.
You can just give me that and then clarify, I appreciate it.
I can tell you who's delinquent and who isn't, and by how much, and, uh, if you like, the terms of the loan.
Please.
Is it twenty years?
Yeah.
Three percent, whatever.
Do you have a loan that's already been taken out, can you, I see that there are quite a few names where they've taken out multiple?
They have.
Can you continue to take out multiple loans?
Well, we do, yeah, people, uh, pay off their loan, we'll take them back on, cause after twenty years, their house might need, you know, more work again.
And I'm sure the majorities are, are great projects, they were, they're great projects, they probably, you know, did payments and fixed their house and made it look great, I'm, I'm sure the majority of it. There's just someone that stick out here on the values and the amounts that just to me.
Our payment rate is very good for a program like this, and if it's three or four percent, if it actually, if it's more than one percent, it's, it's better than the money that we have in, in this very council. But there are often times when people invest more than, than the property's worth, so, it's, it's nice that they're willing to do that.
Also, I'm curious how well-known this program is for, you know, the people in, you know, there are residents, uh, maybe the, the, has been a drop-off in, in activity because of newer residents who aren't aware that it even exists, possibly to live in sound enough flutters of interest, that, that could be.
And it's also, it's a program that we have some, some, uh, guidance, that we, we can change the guidelines, you know, the rates, the, the terms, the, 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 the upper limits, the lower limits. You know, those are all things that we can, we can adjust if you feel that we're missing a target.
Any other new business? Do we need an executive session about real estate?
I would make a motion that we go into an executive session to discuss real estate matters.
Second motion.
Motion by Brian, seconded by, first, second, motion by Dave, seconded by Brian, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, the ayes have it. Council's gonna go into a brief executive session to discuss real estate matters.